To call this meeting of the Stockbridge Planning Board to order. As the agenda shows, this is a meeting to, in effect, to continue the one last week. With our consultant Jeff Lacy. Who was walking us through his draft of the natural restore resource and historic preservation zoning by law. I think we've all seen, at least on the planning board, although I think it's also posted on the town website. A piece that Jeff wanted us to look at about conservation analysis. That was used by the town of Lyden. Previously, and so Jeff, my question, and well, just one, a couple of ground rules, one. In the interest of time, because we didn't get very far last week, I'd like to see if we can make more progress this week, and so. I'd like you, I'd like the, the questions or comments. To be, to come from the planning board only at this stage. Not from the public, and there'll be time for the public to ask questions at the end, I hope. And.
Bill questions should go in the chat.
That's right, and that's what I was gonna say, and the chat feature is a way to record your question. If, if you have one, and also when you want to ask a question or make a comment. Would you please either physically raise your hand or use that funny little? High five feature that is under reactions at the bottom of your screen. So that I can call on you. Again, that keeps us from. Overloading Jeff at the same time, so with those ground rules. Jeff, how you're, you're muted, first of all, and. Secondly, would you like to go dig right back into the bylaw, or do you want us to spend some time going through this conservation analysis?
At your, at your pleasure, Mr. Chairman. I, I wanted to say at least one thing about the bylaw that we talked about last week. Because I kind of detected a little bit of confusion about it. I mean, it is, it is a form of natural resource protection zoning. That has passed in, in many towns. And it, it really in and of itself has nothing to do with cottage era estate redevelopment. It's, it's a bylaw that's designed to be the zoning applicable to residential subdivisions. And that's really, that's really what it is, it can be used for non subdivision purposes by special permit, but. It, it really doesn't have anything to do with cottage era. So I hope people don't confuse it with that, I mean, that's sort of like part two of this project, as I understand it, is to address that. And I don't even know what the consensus is yet among the planning board as to where you want to go with cottage era. But I guess we'll find out, but anyway, that, that bylaw really can't be interpreted to, to apply to say the desisto. Proposal that you folks have been wrestling with for a couple of years. It would not be used to, to bring forward a development like that. The cottage era bylaw that we may draft or adapt could be linked to the NHRPZ bylaw. But only for the purpose of preserving sizable amounts of open space with these proposals. The details of cottage era, what would have to, you know, what would be allowed, what wouldn't be allowed? Densities, uses, things like that, that would all have to be dealt with separately. We linked it to this bylaw, it would just solely be for the purpose of also preserving. Open space in any cottage era estate redevelopment proposal. So I hope that's. Hope that's understood. And the last time I, I left saying that I would do two things, that I would mark up a copy of a conservation analysis. And again, for those who are interested in, in history, this was originally some of Joel's work that he did in my town, Chutesbury. And we've run with it ever since, but. Lyden happened to adopt it, many other towns have adopted it, I only picked it out from Lyden because it may be in a little better sync with your bylaw, because that's where. That's where that came from, from Lyden. Conservation analysis goes in the subdivision regulations. I suppose it could go in the zoning, but we put it in conservation regulation in all cases, because. It more matches the kind of information that is asked for in subdivision applications. Many times they have an environmental impact analysis that's required, and this would just be picked, this conservation analysis would be piggybacked onto environmental analysis. So I marked up a copy and adapted it slightly for you folks from Lyden, so I'm prepared to share that and talk about it. I also. And this was kind of more fun. Took a closer look at the thirty seven Interlake property, the Sisto property, three hundred and twenty acres. And tried to figure out how the bylaw as it's a draft, as it's now drafted, and we discussed last week, would apply to that and. What the results would be, and I prepared a worksheet. That, that. Shows how that would play out on that property. Again, not resembling the proposal that has been made and you're familiar with, but this would be a residential subdivision on that property. Doesn't matter if it, if it had a historic house on it, that. That's immaterial, it's just that property of the size it is and with the constraints that it has, so I can show you that as well.
Okay, I don't know that we want to lead off with that. But that's good to know that you've, you've done that, so you're assuming, well, no, I won't, I won't follow up with a question about thirty seven Interlake. I, I think, unless I misheard you, are you saying that the conservation analysis that you, you showed us from Lyden? Would actually not be part of a zoning bylaw, it would be part of. The responsibility of the Conservation Commission?
No, no, it, it would go in, in your subdivision regulations, which you have.
Okay, okay, that.
And, and those are yours, your planning board subdivision.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
And as you're, as you're reviewing a subdivision. Those regulations would come into play, and if it's going to be an NHRPZ, then you would, you would go to this conservation analysis and there it would fit and you would use it.
And. Hang on Kate, hang on. Jeff. So this is not, this, this conservation analysis is not. A part of your draft bylaw up to this point, but you're proposing, if we agree with it, that it be included?
No, it's, it's not as.
Or would be, it would go, it would go into a subdivision. Into the subdivision section of our bylaws.
It would be inserted in your existing subdivision regulations.
Okay.
Yeah, regulations bylaws are different.
Yeah, I get it, I get it, and, and. But it sort of goes hand in hand with natural resource and historic preservation zoning. In, in the sense of preserving open space, right?
It, it, it's unique to that bylaw.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Kate, what, what did you have to say?
Um, so Jeff, I guess. I'm a little confused about. We had been told all along by Christine that there would subdivision by law would still be an option on the books. And. But if I heard you correctly at the last meeting, you said that. And our natural resource protection zoning would take the place of subdivision, can you sort of clarify? How those two bylaws, because the subdivision is referenced in this draft several times. So what I'm understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that subdivision stays on the books for. For anyone who still wants to use it or certain properties. But it's by a special permit from the planning board as to whether they would use that or not?
Okay. This, the NR, NHRPZ bylaw that we went over last time. Is the zoning that would apply to a residential subdivision. It's, that's zoning for a subdivision.
Okay, then what happens to the current? Subdivision bylaw on our books, because you're referencing it in that draft.
You, you, you shouldn't have a subdivision bylaw, you should have subdivision regulation. And those regulations stay in place. And, and your subdivision regulations have everything to do with road construction. You know, how bendy and twisty the roads are, the drainage, if you have to put in fire hydrants, improvements, things like that.
So if I look at, I have spent some time looking at our subdivision, it is called subdivision regulations, but it also. It's. You know, it's a pretty long. List of rules and regulations, starting with a purpose. The authority is the planning board definitions, and then it goes on to. The procedure, including. Preliminary plan, which you covered last week, as well as definitive plan. And then it, it goes on to list. Other requirements which are. I'm bringing this up just because I think other people will as well, and I don't want you to misunderstand me, I just, I think we all see a lot of potential. In the natural resource protection zoning. But of course, you know. We don't want something that is, is less protective than what we already have, so if you look at those rules and regulations. For example. There's a section where the planning board. At the developer's expense could hire. An expert, and they're pretty clear about what that expertise involves, and it seems like it's. In some ways, it's more tied to a science-based approach. Than what might be in the natural resource protection zoning, so I noticed in the beginning of. Natural resource protection zoning that the developer would choose someone to do the conservation analysis, and. I just wonder if that wouldn't be a recipe for, for, you know, getting somebody biased to do that.
Let me start answering your questions before they, they build up too much, your subdivision regulations remain in effect. So all of those provisions that you're reading about. The ability to hire consultants, probably under section forty four fifty three G. The state law, and that remains in, in effect, and. You could hire that, that consultant to evaluate many aspects of a subdivision proposal. Including the conservation analysis that's submitted by the applicant. So the applicant's gonna submit all kinds of plans for road building and drainage. And you're gonna probably have an engineering consultant reviewing that, and if, if you have a conservation analysis in there as well. You could also, if you felt you needed it, you could hire a, at the applicant's expense, hire a consultant. Well versed in, in conservation, conservation biology perhaps, to evaluate that aspect of it.
And that would be with, with natural resource protection zoning, the bylaw that you've provided us a draft of as well?
Right.
Okay.
Right, you, you lose nothing.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, does it, I mean, I, I defer to you, Jeff, do you want to do this conservation analysis, walk us through that, or do you want to go back to the draft and get, get, make progress on that? Do you feel we need to, I mean, I, I assume we've all read it, and there may be comments, but. If you'd like to highlight parts of it, or do you want to go back to the draft of the bylaw?
I'd like to at least run you through the conservation analysis.
Yeah, okay.
So we get that done before you, and you can consider it. Then we could go back to the draft. I, I would love to show you the thirty seven Interlake and worksheet and analysis. I know it's a controversial property, but it's a property that many of you probably know by now. Probably know the lay of the land out there. But that worksheet kind of, kind of brings together how all these numbers work, how the formulas work. Because that's the way you figure everything out, is on that worksheet. You know, the size of the parcel, the amount of constrained land, the number of houses you can build, the amount of open space, everything else. It's all fit into one page. And it might be interesting just to see how that thirty seven Interlake and property might work out.
Okay, that's, that would be interesting, I, I just a reminder that we, we have a hard stop at six o'clock tonight. There's another CTSB, another public community television. Meeting that has to be covered starting then, and. So we've, we've got to finish by six o'clock without fail.
Well, I'm taking my daughter out for her twenty first birthday at six, so.
Okay, that's an even better reason. So go ahead, Jeff.
Okay, so do I have permission to share?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, are we looking at this?
Not yet.
Oh, what did I do, I did something. I did something.
I can pull it up, I have it handy if you want, Jeff.
No, I, I need to be a big boy and figure out how to do this stuff.
You've done it before.
Here we go. Voila. Got it?
There you go.
Okay. Here we go, so.
That's, Jeff, did you want to pull up, that's thirty seven Interlake, and is that what you wanted to pull up?
That's what I did want to pull up.
Okay, got it.
Yep. You know, and, and again, not because I'm encouraging anything on that property. It's just, it seems to be a handy one, and it's got a lot of size to it. And I was able to find out quite a bit about it, so. And, and again, this is, this is not the proposal that, that they have out there, this is a residential.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we understand.
Good, okay, so this is an open space design worksheet. And so I drafted for Stockbridge, I took it actually from my town, from Chutesbury. I thought ours was pretty good, and but they're all, they all look about the same, so. Here's what you do, you, you determine the number of dwelling units, the maximum number of dwelling units, this is in accordance with the bylaw that we reviewed last week. Then you determine the amount of open space that will be required, the minimum, so it's maximum dwelling units. Minimum open space, and then the developable land. So for that property, and you may correct me, because you might know, probably know more about it than I do. Three hundred and twenty acres altogether, running from the road way up to the top of the hill, it looks like. You have two zones there, you have the R two zone and the R four zone. So you take them one at a time, and you figure out the acreage in the R two zone. And I, I walled it at sixty acres in R two, plus or minus. So then you know that, and now you determine acreage of the constrained land in R two. And here, the way it's drafted, half of the slopes above fifteen, all freshwater wetlands, floodplain lakes, ponds, or restricted areas. So I approximated that at, at ten acres, it was mostly all wetland in that, in that R two zone. Number four, subtract either one half or all the percentages in number three from the total area in the R two zone in number two. So, number two is, let's see. All right, so you, you subtract your constrained land from sixty, you have ten acres of constraint, that leaves you fifty acres of. Theoretically developable land. And once you know that, then you divide that remainder acreage in the R two by four, that's currently what you buy, the bylaw says, is four. Density divisor of four, so four into fifty goes twelve and a half. That's twelve and a half units that could come out of that front portion. Okay, now you got that, now you go to the R four in the back. And that, that I guess to be the remainder, which would be two sixty, two sixty plus sixty equals three twenty, so it's two sixty plus or minus. Again, you take away the constrained lands, and I came up with a hundred and five acres approximately of, of mostly slopes. Some wetlands as well, I think it was about eighty acres of, of slope. And then twenty, twenty-five of, of wetland, so. Then you subtract the acreages in seven from the total area of two sixty, and you get one fifty-five. And then you divide the remainder in the R four by six, so that's a larger density divisor. It's less dense in the R, the R four, as it is now, and you come up with twenty-five point eight three units. Then you combine the results and round down, and that equals thirty-eight. Thirty-eight maximum dwelling units. And then here, you add in any dwelling units from density bonuses or TDR that might have been used to arrive at the maximum dwelling units. And that can't exceed more than twenty-five percent of the, the base number. From ten, so you couldn't increase that any more than twenty-five percent, but since we, I just left that, left that alone in this case, so the thirty-eight carries down. So thirty-eight units for that whole piece is under the way we've written it. Then we go to open space. And you multiply the total R two acreage from up top by point six zero, and that's thirty-six acres. And then you multiply the total R four acreage from number six. By point eight, that was two sixty times point eight equals two oh eight. Then you add them, and that's the base acreage of open space, and that's two hundred and forty-four acres. And again, here, you add in any additional open space from density bonus. To arrive at the total acreage of open space, and again, I left that alone for simplicity. So you end up with two hundred and forty-four acres of open space preserved, and that's seventy-six percent of the entire parcel. Lastly.
Seventy-six percent of the entire parcel, not, not just of the, to include the constrained lands.
Yes.
Yeah. Every.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And the last thing you do is figure out how much, how much land you're, you have to develop. And you subtract number fifteen from, from number one, the total, and that gets you seventy-six acres. So again, if this is all gonna be open space, and you have three twenty, you subtract two forty-four from three twenty, you get seventy-six. And that roughly works out to one point seven acres per lot. If you have thirty-eight lots on seventy-six acres, and you take away fifteen percent, say, for roads and utilities. That'll leave you about one point seven acres per lot. So that's the way. Thirty-seven Interlake and would play out under the bylaw, the way we reviewed it last week, and assuming that my. My guesses on areas and constraints were somewhat accurate.
They're probably as good as anybody else's guesses, guesses, besides the develop, the owner himself. Who probably has a, a precise sense of, of, of those numbers.
Yeah, what, what you'd really need is, is you'd need a delineated wetland. You know, where a, a wetland scientist will go out and actually delineate the precise boundaries of all the wetlands on the property, and then. And then take a measurement of, of how large that area is, and then also at the rear. Would need some type of slope map to figure out how much of that is over fifteen percent.
Yeah. Okay.
So with this basic mapped information in the bylaw, and the numbers in the bylaw, you can figure out all these things. Pretty quickly. Maximum units, minimum open space. Maximum amount of developable land. And that's what you, that's what you have going into your conservation analysis. Because the conservation analysis. That, that Joel and I wrote a long time ago, that is sort of like Randall's four-step method of determining. You know, where those units might go, where they might best go on the property. And what natural resources out there are most deserving of protection. How, how to lay this out, so it, it works for natural resource protection, and it also works for, for building houses without the. You know, in a way that'll make them marketable and not environmentally destructive, so that's really what the conservation analysis does, it just sorts out where, where this is gonna go.
Jeff, a question, and I'm sure others will have questions too. As you know, the owner of that property wanted to put up a hotel, wanted to convert the. Cottage era estate. The Gilded Age Estate. To a restaurant and hotel. Obviously, your analysis assumes this is purely residential, and is there no room in this analysis, no room in this approach? Under, under this bylaw for alternative? Non-residential uses, or, or at least non, non-permanent residents?
There is, there is, if, if, if that's where you both want to go. It, it could be a part of this at the end. Which would make it significantly longer, or it could be a separate cottage era estate redevelopment bylaw. That would pertain to certain pieces of land, and that would need to be done under this framework. Mostly for the open space. The open space preservation factor, the, all the details of, of, you know, what you allow in terms of restaurants and, and. Hotels and townhouses and, you know, tennis courts and all that stuff that might be proposed, that would all be dealt with in that other section. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I got you.
Yeah. And the most towns that I work with. Adopt a zoning bylaw, like the one we reviewed last week, adopt the conservation analysis. Let's see, we haven't been through that yet, and, and adopt the worksheet like this, and that's as far as they go. And that, that meets their needs, but you folks may have additional needs with these large estates that you want to address, and. That, that, the details of that would have to be separate, either at the end of this or in a separate zoning bylaw.
Okay, good, okay.
Question, Bill.
Okay, Wayne, go ahead.
Would that, would, would the calculations that you just explained to us necessarily have to carry over to the? Cottage era state bylaw, if it was a separate bylaw? We could determine different densities if we chose to do so in that section, couldn't we?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, these are, these are densities that most often apply to single-family residential subdivisions that are typical of rural towns. But there, there could be another set of numbers that is indexed to that type of project.
Yeah, and, and it's a good question, Wayne, not only did the, does the owner of that property. His original plan was to include a, convert the, the old house to a hotel and restaurant, but also to put up condos. In addition to townhouses, or what, you know, I guess would pass for single-family residences, it was a.
Condo tells was what they were.
Yeah, it, it was a very. Not your typical Stockbridge property development.
Very transient in nature.
Yeah, it was a, it was a hotel, and probably a lot of second homes. For New Yorkers or, or others. But this is, this is a good illustration, and, you know, we have to take it with a grain of salt, because you've made some estimates, but it's a. It's very revealing in how. Frankly, how few actual. Residential plots, parcels can be developed on this land.
And, and of course, there, there are ways to, to change this, I mean. You know, the, the thirty-eight is a product of, of the numbers that are in that bylaw.
Yeah.
And it's a product of, of looking at half the slopes above fifteen percent. I estimated that, that half that property, probably a hundred and sixty acres at the rear was in this slope category. And, and yet I can only deduct eighty percent of it. If I deducted a hundred percent, then. This number. Here would, would go up to a hundred and eighty-five. And then the one fifty-five would drop. And then that would drop, and then thirty-eight would drop. So you add more constrained land to take away and you reduce units. If you, if you change this to say fifty, twenty percent, half of twenty percent. Then you're going to take away less and your thirty-eight is going to go up. So. You know, that, that's kind of a key thing in, in these things is for the board to really wrap its head around these numbers. And decide what numbers are going to work for you folks in terms of, of your town, its character, its politics and, and your, your voters.
Bill, can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Marie.
The seventy-eight acres at the bottom, that's the total of number of acres, seventy-six acres at the bottom. That's the total number of acres that you can put houses on, correct?
Yeah.
Do they have to be single-family homehouses? I mean, it, could you have? I guess the density doesn't change, like if they wanted to be, say, double houses on at one and a half acre, you know? Is this number of, of dwelling units? Seventy, seventy-six acres, can you put up? More than just a single-family house, like duplex or, you know?
It, it's up to you. As. As, as, as many of these towns have defined, a dwelling unit is one dwelling unit. That can be in a single-family dwelling.
But that's not acreage.
No, seventy-six is, is, is how much land is going to be developed.
Right.
For your roads, your driveways, your houses, all that.
Right.
What kind of houses you allowed, allow in there is up to you.
Okay.
Definitely single-family. In, in, in my town, we, we count each dwelling unit like one single-family dwelling, a duplex would be two. Triplex would be three.
Or townhouses, yeah, whatever.
Right, and, you know, you, you, you can figure out what types of housing you want to allow in there. And maybe even say that some of them are less than a unit, you know, a fraction of a unit.
Okay. But that gets put in the bylaw of what's allowed? Or is that individually each, each project that comes before us?
I, I, I think in, in some towns. We've clearly stated that all underlying housing types are allowed. Now, that's usually the way to do it, you say whatever underlying housing types are allowed in that district, in that area can be put into these. You know, but each unit is a unit, so you, you use up two of them if you do a duplex. Use one unit if you do a single-family.
Okay, thank you.
Bill, may I ask a question?
Go ahead, Nancy.
So if it's a one point seven acre lot and where, like the Sisto is. Two acre and four acre zoning, how does that equate to? I mean, is that out the window, it just all goes down to a one point seven acre lot?
Well, that's the average. If, if you have thirty-eight lots on seventy-six acres. And you take away fifteen percent. Then you, you divide, you get an average of one point seven, they don't have to all be that same size, some could be larger, some of them could be smaller.
So we have to still stay the two acre and the four acre zoning though?
Well, you, you, you're still going to have that.
Okay.
The four acre, and, you know, any kind of road front development that you have, that you normally have along roads, probably most of what you do. Those will still be two and four. Because they're not subdivisions. It's, that's called an A and R, so that's a non-subdivision type of project. You have, you have a town road and you're just going to make a lot off of it. So this wouldn't apply to that necessarily.
Oh.
This applies to a subdivision where you're building a new road to create new frontage for more lots. In Massachusetts, that's what a subdivision is.
Okay.
Jeff, what would, what would be allowed under our current bylaws with our two and R four?
For this property?
Yeah.
Oh, boy, I, I, I'd have to cogitate on that a little bit. Let's see, I mean, roughly you'd have, you'd have sixty acres. Up in, like up in that front part, which looks pretty developable.
Right.
With, with some wetlands at the rear. And you're in the R two, so it's two acre lots. So just on the front part. You might be twenty-five. Or so.
Okay.
Figuring in the inefficiencies of, of development, and you wouldn't, you wouldn't get thirty.
Right.
Probably get twenty-five. And then you've got, you've got the wetlands to deal with. And then you've got a large developable area past that where I can imagine you could put a lot. If, if you, if you can get a road back there. It, it seemed like the Sisto developers seemed to think they could get a road back there. Is, is there already a road back there?
No, they planned for twenty-four houses back there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the, the, the other thing about the Sisto proposal, well, never, I don't want to talk about that anymore.
Yeah, we can get.
Get in trouble on that one.
We can get bogged down, that's a hot button issue. But I think this is very helpful to have this illustration. So thank you for that.
Let me just say one thing, though. If, if, if we develop a cottage era bylaw. And, and if, if it was required to come in under this type of open space framework. A proposal like the Sisto one with. A mix of uses and, and housing types and different things on that property might be able to be built. But you would also still get. That two hundred and forty-four acres of open space.
Right.
Which I don't, I don't see in your proposal now. Or, and I don't see a requirement for anything like that in your existing cottage era bylaw. So that's the main purpose of linking it to this, is getting sizable open space out of a proposal like that.
Right, right, I get it.
So, thank you. I'm sorry, Bill, go ahead, I didn't mean.
Kate had her hand up, we'll get back to you, Wayne, Kate, go ahead. You're muted, there you go.
I know. Jeff, is there? Any way to address? So going back to Randall's presentation. Some of those projects he saw, the properties looked really outsized and boxy. Is there a way to address footprint, lot coverage? I know you're looking at averages, so, but is there a way to address lot coverage as well as? Mass? Is there some way to, to do this so that you don't get these sort of McMansion-type-looking? Properties that at least I don't associate with Stockbridge?
That's difficult in Massachusetts. Section three of the zoning act does. Does prevent direct regulation on the interior area of single-family and two-family dwellings. Some, some towns do it by what's known as F A R, floor area ratio. And that's the ratio of the floor area in the structure to the overall lot. It, it can't be beyond a certain percentage. Very seldom have I seen floor area ratio used in rural areas, though, and on, on big lots like one point seven acres. Usually it's in, in the. In the suburbs around Boston where they have very small lots and they're trying to cram a gigantic McMansion onto those lots, that's usually where that's used. So it's difficult to get at. And, and probably you don't have that ability now in Stockbridge with any other regular lots that's created, I wouldn't guess.
We have this, an overlay district. Around the lake where we have setbacks and height restriction. And lot coverage. And mass, and mass coverage limits.
That, that wouldn't necessarily go away if one of these.
No, I know it wouldn't because it's a totally different, it's around the lake, it's just, you know, a hundred and fifty-foot. Buffer area around the lake and some of the other waterways. Is that the type of thing that? Maybe if you get there, then.
If, if one of these projects was proposed, I, I, I don't know if there's R two or R four anywhere near the lake. But if, if there isn't, and, and H R P Z was proposed there. Those requirements would still attach to those lots. I believe.
Okay.
But the, I mean, they, just to be clear, the, it's a overlay district called the Lake and Pond Overlay District and it's, applies to a hundred and fifty feet. Only.
Hundred and fifty feet from the bowl?
Yeah.
Okay, is any of that in R two?
Yes.
Yes, some of it.
Okay.
And R four.
Yeah, so, so I can't see any reason why those requirements wouldn't apply to lots.
Well, those are quarter acre lots.
Right.
Even though it's an R two zone, they're quarter acre lots.
Not all of them.
Many of them, yeah, yeah.
No, they're, they're varying sizes around the lake, they're not, you know, they're all, they're different acreages.
But many of them are non-conforming, which makes it challenging when we're trying to permit them.
Yeah. Wayne, please go ahead with your question if you still have it.
Jeff, just if you would extrapolate that out a little bit for the. What would currently be, you did the R two, which is approximately twenty-five. Units would be allowed under current. Could you do that for the R four as well, just so I make sure I'm understanding it properly? And I know these are roundabout numbers, but I'd like to understand currently would be allowed there.
You'd like to see a conventional build-out of the thirty-seven interlaken.
Please. I, I know it's, I know it's rough numbers, I understand, and you're doing this on the fly.
Okay. That's actually fun work, it's.
For you.
So, sure, I can do that.
And Jeff, I think it's important to also have people remember that there's a conservation easement put on all of that open space. So it's not at some point in the future going to be developed because I think we have people in town. That live next to lots now that are saying, oh, we don't want this or we don't want that being built next door to us. And if you purchased one of these homes, you would know that that open space is going to be conserved for. Forever or protected under the Constitution.
I mean, it, it could also be of benefit to the, to the abutters. Who are now sitting next to developable land. And who at the end of a project like this could be sitting next to permanently preserved open space. That they don't, that they don't have to worry about anymore.
Depending on how it plays out, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, where the open space is, yeah.
I mean, Jeff, can you take a look at the subdivision rules and regulations that we have so that you can see what I'm?
Yeah, I've already made a note to do that.
Thank you.
And Jeff, you might want to explain the conservation analysis from Lydon that you had me mail out.
Sure, well, I can, I can stop sharing this and start sharing that. If, if everyone is.
Yep. Please go ahead.
All right, stop share. Now I'm going to click it again. Okay. Are we there?
Yes.
Okay, I, I have to make you guys go away for a second. There we go. Okay, Lydon Mass Conservation Analysis, which passed in two thousand and fourteen. And again, this went in their subdivision regulations. So. You know, you can all take and read this at your leisure. But. Some of my notes, I tried to put a few notes in here to make it faster to go over. This section attaches only to subdivisions or non-subdivisions coming in under your N H R P Z bylaw that we are writing. Analysis is submitted by the applicant. So. They submit this analysis and they can get a consultant to do that and they submit it to the planning board. And the findings are made by the planning board in response. And this is where the planning board can hire their own consultant to help evaluate what the applicant consultant did. This is how a whole project parcel is evaluated when designing areas appropriate for development versus conservation.
Is it spelled out that the planning board can hire a consultant at the applicant's expense?
I believe that's already in your subdivision regulations.
It is.
Yeah, so this would just be a part of that, and yes, you can.
So this is just, becomes in addition to our subdivision rules and regulations, it's included in that section?
It's just an extra part of your subdivision regulations, it'll bulk them up by a few pages.
Okay.
So, let's see, this is a little confusing. Because Lydon had an environmental impact analysis, so they were supposed to. Submit portions of that, I don't know whether you have an, an E I A requirement in your subdivision regs, but. You know, they'd have to submit that as well. As they do now for any subdivision. Okay, so, you know, here's where it starts talking about what. What it really does, farmland, existing trail corridors, scenic view sheds, public water supply, lake watersheds, park and recreational land, land subject to easements or restrictions. Contributing development, wooded areas, historic and archaeological sites identified in the town's master plan, visioning plan, or open space and recreation plan. So this is part of the information required. You know, what did I add? I added visioning plan because that's what you have. Lakes, ponds, streams, rivers, wetlands, floodplain, and biocore two habitat is mapped by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, need to show that. Slope succeeding.
Jeff, quick questions on the biocore, that's from two thousand and ten. Does that matter that that's over ten years old?
Well, it, it's actually biocore. Two, but.
I know, I have a copy of it and it's dated two thousand and ten, but.
Yeah.
Is that, I'm just, does it matter that that's sort of old?
Well, if, if they still call it, I believe they still call it biocore two.
Yes.
So whatever they have. Whether it's old or current, that's what you got to use.
I don't think our flood maps have been updated either, as they have been for other communities, but I'm not sure about that. But those are things to think about.
So, so, so these are all the things, and, and, you know, we can add this, we can bulk this up, we can. Look it over, but these are the things that they have to account for and show in their analysis. They need to be showing all the slopes in excess, I put fifteen because that's what's in your bylaw. I think Lydon had twenty. So you've got fifteen and up. That's, that's a little stricter. I changed it to match your bylaw so far. Stone walls, cart paths, ways, old foundations and other cultural features, and I added including of Native American origin. Big concern in our area here. Other land exhibiting present or potential future recreational, historic, ecological, agricultural, water resource, scenic or other natural resource value. Other land exhibiting present or potential future recreational, historic, ecological, agricultural, water resource, scenic or other natural resource value specifically identified and requested to be shown by the planning board at the discussion meeting. So you folks have the ability to to add other stuff to this list as well. Conservation analysis shall describe the importance and current potential conservation value of land on the site identified in subsections above. In the course of its initial review, the planning board shall indicate to the applicant which of the lands identified have the most conservation value and are most important to preserve and where development may be most appropriately located. If the planning board determines pursuant to the provisions of blah blah in the town of Leiden zoning by law by law that the lands of conservation value cannot be protected except by the use of an open space design plan, the planning board shall include indicate to the applicant that the applicant must submit a plan for an open space design. This is a little confusing. This is the waiver section where an applicant could propose a plan that significantly deviates from the requirements of of the bylaw and seek a special permit to get that approved, that waiver. But if the planning board finds that the lands of conservation value cannot be protected except by doing everything according to the book here, then it can deny that waiver and require them to do a full open space design. Okay, and I I said what I just said here, pretty much. Planning board shall, in the course of its subdivision review, study the conservation analysis and formally determine which land should be preserved and where development may be located. Planning board shall make written findings supporting this determination. These are the conservation findings. So it's the analysis by the applicant and the findings, which are binding findings by the planning board. Planning board shall deny any application that does not include sufficient information to make conservation findings or that does not preserve land that the planning board determined should be preserved from development as a result of the conservation analysis and finding. So this is the closest you get to discretion in this process. Subdivision is is pretty much by right, but this is a little bit of discretion that we've thrown in here. You know, if they really don't do a good analysis and it's way off and you know, the the land that you feel needs to be conserved is not, and houses are all in the wrong place, buildable area, then you can reject it. Final determination made by the planning board. The planning board's conservation findings shall be incorporated into its decision to approve or deny a preliminary plan or definitive plan if no preliminary plan is submitted. And and you know, the definitive plan is the final plan that gets issued out of this whole process. It's the definitive subdivision plan. That's the end plan here. And that's pretty much it. That's pretty much it. And you know, to me, this is sort of the this is sort of the fun part of this where the planning board gets to dig into these parcels and really see what's out there and ask a lot of good questions and maybe go on some field trips and work with their consultant. You know, to figure out the best design for these big pieces of land. And you have a bit of authority here. And what you determine needs to go into the final definitive plan in order to be approved.
Any questions of Jeff about the any more questions about it? Okay. Again, I think that was useful, Jeff. Unless you have more to give us on this, do you want to go back to the bylaw?
Sure. Go share screen again. Here we go. Okay, this is what we looked at last week. I don't think I made any changes to it. It's called draft number two.
Right, I think we got up to section D under this 6.6.
Allowable residential units.
I think that's where we should start because I think we got we covered section C if if I remember correctly, according to my notes.
Yeah, just the different required percentages for each of the two districts.
Yeah.
Open space.
Is that changeable? I mean, is this something the 80% and the 60% is that set in stone at the moment? We still can make that decision, right?
Oh, yes.
And make it a different percentage if that's what we want to do.
Yes, you may. I'm I'm just putting I'm just putting percentages out there that I've seen in these bylaws around the state.
Okay.
So and this part allowable residential units, this mimics the first part of well, or this is the basis for the first part of that worksheet that we went through. And all this stuff in here about adding and subtracting is just summarized in that worksheet. So the the punchline is subtract from the gross acreage of the project, the total acreage of and here we go back, one half the land of slopes of 15% or greater. All land subject to easements or restrictions prohibiting prohibiting development. You know, if there's a farm that has an
I heard you.
If there's a farm that has an APR on it or some property with a conservation easement, or if there's a a power line going through with that can't be developed. That's what we're talking about here. That all gets subtracted out. Theme of 100 year floodplains get subtracted out and all freshwater wetlands.
So where did you get the one half of the 15% again?
Oh, goodness. I think that might have dated back to the original Chutesbury one. I I'm not sure. It's it's been different in different towns than it's been 15, it's been 20, it's been 25, it's it's been a half or a whole. You know, the the more you take out here, the stricter it gets. The the lower this number is, the stricter it gets. The higher this gets, the stricter it gets.
So it's it's a an individual decision.
Yes. Yes. And like I said, this would affect that the Sisto project because if if this was all of the land with slopes 15% or greater, that 38 units would decrease.
Right. Okay. Go ahead.
All right, so 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 here here is what you would and and you could even if you add some other category in here that 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 you felt it was a constrained land that you wanted to have accounted for, you could take that out. You could also put in that 15% business, the 15% allowing for roads and and development inefficiencies that often gets attached here. You could take 15% away from that. You could add that here if you wanted to. Yeah, this is about where we got last time. To determine the base number of allowable dwelling units in the project area, divide the net acreage after you subtract all this constraint by six in the R four and by four in the R two. And I I did sort of some hypotheticals as to how that would work out over here. But but we saw a better hypothetical with the 37 interlakened before.
Right, right.
So in 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 the end here, by the time you're done with the unit calculation, you know the maximum numbers of of units. That's set. Then you get into density bonuses and and this is where towns do a lot of adjusting. First of all, as to what they wish to have count as a density bonus, what's important to them to encourage and 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 how much percentage they're going to give it. So what are some of these? They're they're given by special permit at the discretion of the planning board. So if you're in a subdivision review and you want to use density bonuses or TDR to add units to your your subdivision, you have to step out of the subdivision process and get a separate special permit for density bonuses or TDR. So it's a if this truly becomes discretionary review at this point because you're adding to the kind of base number of units that you can get from from this. So you do it by special permit, the planning board. Some of the things that Leiden saw was important, allowing deeded public access to the open space so that the public can get on to the open space. That was deemed a community benefit. And that get that can give you a maximum of 10% over the allowable unit count in D three. So in the the Sisto case we just looked at where it's 38 doing this, if the planning board approved it, could get you 3.8 more units. 38, 10%, 38, 3.8 could be added if the project had public access.
Jeff, is this a place where we could also insert a bonus for affordable housing to be built by the developer?
There is one.
Is it? I'm sorry, maybe I missed it.
Yeah, it's
Coming up next.
It's the next one.
Oh, I see it. Yep, I just completely glossed over.
So so this is affordable housing.
Yep, got it.
And for every unit included in the loud unit count under G three that is built and dedicated as an affordable unit, two bonus market rate units may be permitted up to a maximum of 25% over the allowable unit count. So if you did this, you could increase the 38 by 25%, which would be like maybe nine, nine units or something. If if that that would be a maximum. You wouldn't necessarily be guaranteed that because it's a special permit. But but the maximum would be, say, nine additional to that 38 if you follow this and created some affordable housing.
Okay.
Jeff, can you do inclusionary housing where you accept donations instead of building in this section?
I think so. I think you can.
And also with special permits in this section. I know under preliminary, under definitive plans, a special permit can be challenged in court. Can they be challenged in this if we grant a special permit for one of these density bonuses, the way this is written? Or has that been determined yet by the court?
Oh, any special permit could be challenged.
Okay, I thought so, but I was hoping it wasn't like that.
Yeah. Yeah, special permit sits with the town clerk for 20 days after it's approved and that's the appeal period. And it it can certainly be challenged.
So is the point, Kate, I'll get to your question in just a minute. Is the point here that you could you could give the owner or developer a density bonus even if he doesn't build the affordable housing, but if he gives the town money that it can be built elsewhere? Is that what you're talking about Christine and and Jeff? Does it work?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and and sometimes it's land.
Yeah.
You land the room.
So is that technique covered in here or does it need to be elaborated? It doesn't.
It might. It it would have to be elaborated unless you have an inclusionary housing section in your zoning somewhere that that I could attach this that that I could cite.
We're working on a housing trust fund, but we don't have it completed yet. So it's like, what's going to come first in this process? Hopefully, they can go together close enough so we can use them.
Yeah, yeah, there's plenty of language out there that could be grafted right onto this section to to provide those options.
Okay.
I had my hand up and I'm going to ask a question, Bill. I'm sorry.
Call on you, Kate. Don't worry, I was gonna call on you.
Well, Jeff, I'd like to know what are the pros and call cons of inclusionary housing?
Well, let's see. What are the pros and cons of inclusionary housing? Well, I'm if if you ask the housing advocate, you probably get a very long winded answer. I'm an Enviro and that's what I do. But I still I still see inclusionary housing as as a way to provide housing for a greater percentage of our population. And I in projects like this and most projects, I don't see that they have if there's any more environmental impact from inclusionary housing. So I I can't really see the downsides. You know, I I support inclusionary housing and I would would like to see some more of it in these types of projects that are not all just McMansion after McMansion. Maybe the incentive for the developer will be to build a couple more McMansions if they can squeeze out an affordable residence. And you know, that's what motivates developers and 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 that's, you know, you you can't order them to do it, but you can incentivize them to do it.
I guess I maybe I don't understand is inclusionary housing where there's housing on the property or it's shunted elsewhere in town to another part of town?
It can be done both ways. The the requirement comes from a specific project with a specific locus. And most of us in the planning world favor the inclusionary houses being integrated somewhat with the market rate units. That's seen as as best, as you know, not isolating people of of different means.
Right, and that is what Randall had recommended when he did his presentation and
Yeah.
that part of it.
Yeah, I would I would prefer that too. And and it's up to you whether you want to allow other alternatives. You could allow other alternatives to be proposed such as money, you know, for the town or somebody to go build affordable housing or land on which the town could build it or or whatever. You could allow those to be proposed, but in the end, to reserve for yourselves the ability to approve or deny that. So they can propose these other things, but if you really felt strongly that the inclusionary housing ought to be mixed into the project with the market rate units or or at least on the same property. In the end, you can insist on that.
Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate your answer.
Christine, do you still have a question or is your hand raised previously?
Raised previously because I'm all black, I guess you can't see it, or at least I can't. But I think that there are some very good examples of where inclusionary housing has been used effectively to not produce a whole lot of housing, but to at least give a few more units to a building and particularly if we get into adaptive reuse with historic buildings. I think there's a lot of opportunities there to explore further.
Okay, Jeff, do you want to keep going?
You bet.
But just one follow up question to that, Jeff. Could you also have have it spelled out that the housing is required to be part of the project and and cannot be shunted elsewhere in town?
Yes, you could.
Thank you.
Because this is an option and this is an option that the developer can either pursue or not.
Thank you.
Right, so yeah. Last one is if the applicant preserves as permanent open space more than the minimum required percentage, a maximum of 10% over the allowable unit count per additional 5% of the whole parcel preserved as open space. So if if the 244 from the the Sisto example if the 244 from the Desisto example of open space, let's see, 5% of the whole, if if 5% more of the whole parcel was added to that 244, then they'd be eligible for 10% over the allowable unit count in D three, which would be 38, which would be 3.8 more. So 5% of the whole parcel, I don't know, who does math fast? 320, 5% that'd be, that'd be five, 15.
16.
16, rounded up to 16. So if 16 more acres were, were added to that 244, so that became 250, 260, then possibly they could get 10% more over the 3.8, so they could get 3.8, 3.8 acres, 3.8, look at that, more units. So it would end up being, instead of 38, it would be 41.8. In the end, in the end, you have to round down, so the 0.8 isn't going to get you anything. So it would be three more units. So that's how that works. And of course, if you do this, if you take 16 more acres and put it into open space, you're going to be reducing the 76 acres.
Right.
So that gives you less, that gives you less land to put the houses on and more houses to put on it. So it's you can only do this a little bit and still have it work. And then that 1.7 acre lot size would go down. It would be smaller lots. Okay, density transfer. This, this dates all the way from Chutesbury. We put it in Chutesbury in 2008. Let me read my, let me see if my note makes sense. TDR is also an entirely optional provision. There's a way to preserve additional land through an HRPZ. TDR can be complicated, but not so much as provided here. It's a simple way to add units of development to an NHRPZ project by importing development rights from another parcel of land. If approved by special permit, additional units are allowed in the proposed NHRPZ project, while the parcels from whence the development rights came are permanently preserved. And again, this is by special permit. So it says, "The town therefore will permit residential density to be transferred from one parcel, the sending parcel, to another, the receiving parcel." And receiving parcel, this is the project, the NHRPZ project. They can only be, rights can only go into an NHRPZ project. This is TDR that can only be used with NHRPZ, which shall be an NHRPZ project under this section. Process is as follows. All density transfers require a special permit from the planning board. So again, you're into discretionary area. Special permit application for a density transfer shall be signed by the owners or their authorized representatives of both the sending and receiving parcel. So the land from where the rights are coming from can be in the same ownership as the applicant. It could be right next door, or it could be some other place in town. Or those parcels could be owned by another party, not necessarily the applicant for the NHRPZ project. So there's a number of different ways this could happen. Special permit application shall show a proposed NHRPZ plan for the receiving parcel of division or special permit, as well as a base unit count calculation prepared according to the provisions of D three up above. For the sending parcel, the applicant may calculate allowable number of units eligible for transfer by either. This is, this is the complicated part. So development rights transferred are calculated either at one development right per 15 acres preserved or one right for 25 acres preserved. So the reason we did this in Chutesbury is elsewhere in here, it says that if if the parcel that you're transferring from hasn't been altered in any way since the adoption of this bylaw, an intact parcel, then you can calculate your net acreage just like you did up above there, you know, subtracting the different areas and stuff, and dividing by 15. Or if the parcel has been altered, changed, you can only, you can only divide by 25. So the reason for this, and I never explain it well, is we thought that this was a possible way to game the system for somebody to have a piece of backland that, that contains a great big wetland. So you divide that parcel up and you just have one, one new parcel that has just wetlands on it. And then you go bring that parcel forward and say, I want to do TDR with that. Well, that's kind of gaming the system. So if you do that, then we're going to force you into that formula up there. And that's not really going to work. That's not going to help you because all that wetland is going to get subtracted out. Whereas if you haven't done anything to that parcel since the bylaw was adopted, it's just as it was. Oh, no, excuse me, I got this backwards. I'm sorry, I don't explain, I do not, I know what this means, but I don't explain it well. If you're trying to game the system, you've altered the parcel, you've created a parcel, it's just wetlands in some way, if you've altered it, then you get one unit per 25 acres preserved. You've got to preserve a lot of land just to get one unit. If you haven't altered that parcel, you haven't jury-rigged it or messed around with it, then we'll let you do it the normal way and you can divide by 15. And you'll get one unit per 15 acres preserved. So this is, this is the better deal. So we, we didn't want people trying to game the system here, and that's why we have these two different, two different numbers. Can I stop talking about that?
That's, that's hard to get your head around. Go ahead.
I'll, I'll, I'll figure out a better way of explaining that. Maybe I'll make a graphic, a graphic that shows how that works for next time. Yeah.
How often do you find developers using this?
I personally have not experienced it yet.
At all?
At all.
Yeah.
At all. I have a developer in our town who is very interested in it because she's the state's largest landowner. She's got land all over the place. And she's very acutely aware of this provision, and she may be the first one to try to use it.
Okay.
This next one B is what explains what I was just trying to explain to you folks. Planning board may then grant a special permit allowing the transfer to the receiving parcel of some or all of the allowable residential units from the sending parcel. So again, it's may, so it's discretionary. You know, this, these density transfers, you look at them and you can really make a determination of whether this is in the, in the interest of this bylaw or not. And if it's, if it's kind of bogus and the land being preserved is undevelopable anyway and you don't care about it, or it's not very good land, you don't have to do this. It's an option. It's an option for the applicant to propose it, and it's an option for you to approve it. Yeah, so it's the area that's the 15 or 20 acre, 25 acres, there's the, from the sending parcel has to be permanently preserved. So that's going to conserve that land forever.
Well, wouldn't it be conserve forever if it's wetland, anyway?
As long as the Wetlands Protection Act doesn't change and your local bylaw doesn't change. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so here, here's probably the most important part. The planning board in deciding whether to grant any TDRs needs to make some findings. Planning board shall not approve any residential density transfer unless it finds all the following. All requirements of granting a special permit have been satisfied. The addition of transferred units to the receiving parcel will not increase the maximum allowable unit count by more than 25%. This 25% is a, is a hard limit on how much these projects can be expanded by any combination of density bonuses and TDR, and will not adversely affect the area surrounding the receiving parcel. So if you think there are too many units already in this NHRPZ, you don't have to allow any more units to be added. Density transfer will benefit the town by protecting a substantial area of developable land with conservation value on the sending parcels in a manner that furthers the purposes of this Section 6. You go all the way up to the top and you can, you can read what this is all about. So if, if what they're proposing to conserve is not high-quality land, it's, it's otherwise undevelopable and really doesn't need any preservation because you don't think it'll ever be developed, it's not really worth a lot, not very good habitat, you know, a logged over area or something, you don't have to do it. Density transfer will be consistent with a master plan, community development plan, visioning plan, I added that again, or other townwide comprehensive plan if any. So you get a lot of discretion here on both density bonuses and TDR. And again, this establishes the maximum density bonus or density transfer. Any combination of density bonus or TDR shall not exceed 25% of the unit count. So you're not going to go over, you're not going to, through any one of these things on the Desisto property, you're not going to go over nine more units. The 38, 25% of 38 is what, about nine? So you're not going to go over nine more units. So the 38 can only increase up to 47 if all of these were used. Oh, here we go. This is types of residential development. This is a question from before. Allowable dwelling units may be developed to single-family or any other housing types already otherwise allowed by this zoning bylaw in the zoning district, provided that all applicable requirements for the land use district are satisfied. This would pertain back to that overlay district by the bowl and that the number of dwelling units does not exceed the allowable unit count in D six, which is right there. Subdivision approval and approvals for any other allowed housing types proposed shall be fulfilled concurrently in one proceeding to the extent practical. So here, it's whatever houses are allowed otherwise in the district can fit in here. Dimensional and design requirements. Minimum lot sizes. Limiting factor on lot area in NHRPZ is the need for adequate water supply and sewage disposal. Therefore, there is no minimum lot area for zoning purposes. This does not affect the powers of the Board of Health to require minimum areas on the lot for the disposal of sewage and the protection of water supply. So while the, our previous example, the, the average was 1.7, that's just an average. Some of those lots, you know, if a three-bedroom house was being proposed, it could be a three-quarter acre lot because that would support a well and a septic system. And then other lots where you're going to put a really big house with lots of bedrooms could be bigger than 1.7. It'd be two, two and a half, four, however many. You know, some of these could be estates. So no set lot size, so the, so the four-acre lot size and the two-acre lot size don't, don't apply in here.
Jeff, so Joel had recommended applying his, his open space residential bylaw to those areas of town where there is currently water and sewer only, because he said otherwise you will get sprawl. Can you, can you sort of comment on that?
Well, almost all these, I write, are for towns that don't have water and sewer. I, I think they would work just fine in the areas where you do have water and sewer. They'd work very well because you could have any kind of lot sizes you wanted in there. It could be very creative with lot sizes. Some could be estates and others could be little cottage communities.
But I guess I'm asking about, do you?
Yep.
His recommendation was that open space residential develop not, development not apply to those parts of town where there is not?
I'm getting to that.
Okay.
That, that leaves, that leaves the two and four acre subdivision possibility in place. So parcels like Desisto and, and others that you have that are fairly large could be pretty much divided up into a network of roadways and house lots, you know, all two-plus acres and four-plus acres, fully fragmented, no permanent open space. So if that, I'm meaning to call Joel, and when I do, I'm going to ask him about that. Because I think this works best where they're, works equally good without water and sewer.
I think Joel's concern was the monitoring of septic systems and that they can have some problems. And if we go with package treatment plants, we would need to make sure that there were a lot of regulations in place to protect the town if the package treatment plant is not properly maintained.
There, there is probably no need. Given the numbers that we have right now in the bylaw, there's probably no need for package treatment plants or shared septic systems or any of that stuff. This is designed to work with the existing Title V Board of Health requirements, which essentially say you need 10,000 square feet per bedroom. So a four-bedroom house needs an acre, 40,000 square feet, which is the size of a football field. Your average size lots here are going to be, I guess, 1.5, you know, football field and a half or over a football field in size at least. And the Desisto one was 1.7. So a 1.7, you could fit almost
No.
almost seven bedrooms. So Joel may have had in mind
Wait a minute.
much smaller lots.
I'm writing.
Nancy, you have to mute yourself.
Yes.
Yeah.
Please.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. If you can just ask him about that.
I will.
Thank you.
So Joel said it works best in water, sewer areas.
In order to avoid sprawl.
Okay, I will have an answer from him by the next meeting. Okay. All right, so minimum lot sizes. Setbacks, road frontage and road requirements. There should be no setback requirements, except the minimum building setback shall be 20 feet or 10 feet. Be 20 feet or 10 feet from any property line for a dwelling or accessory structure respectively. So let's see, what did they do here? Leiden was a little different than.
I think the word is respectively.
Look at that.
It might also be respectful, but I think the word you need is respectively.
Yeah. That's a good catch. That, that, that now sits in the lot, in, in the Leiden.
Well, it's the thing, kind of thing a spell check doesn't catch.
Right, right.
Time for a special town meeting.
Yeah. All right, so it, it says the set, all the setbacks are, are 20 feet from any property line for a, for a dwelling and 10 feet from any property line for an accessory structure. Okay. The houses have to be 20 feet, accessory structures 10 feet. So those are the only setbacks. There's no front, rear, side setbacks. You just have to observe these, these two. This is a little thing that they add. In the case of adjoining property is not a part of a NHRPZ, the setback requirements for such property line shall be otherwise required in the bylaw. So if you have, if you have lots that are, um, um, abutting adjoining property, um, whether it's been developed or not, you have to adhere to the normal setbacks. There shall, this is important, there should be no numerical requirements for road frontage in an NRPG, in HRPG. Uh, provided that each lot has legally and practically adequate vehicular access to a public way or a way approved under the subdivision regulations across either its own frontage or via a shared driveway under Section 5.7 of this bylaw. So what that also says is there's no lineal frontage requirement on, on, on a road. You can touch a road. Um, you can use a shared driveway, you know, you can come in over a road, you can use a shared driveway. You can have deeded access. There are many ways to access lots without building subdivision roads 250 feet long for every single house lot. So this cuts down greatly on the amount of infrastructure and per, pervertious service, surfaces, chances of erosion and sedimentation. And if the roadways eventually become town roads for Stockbridge, um, it would lessen the amount of new roads that the town would be asked to take over and start servicing. So, so this is something that is, um, it, it seems to work well for houses as long as the, as long as the legal documents are, are properly drawn, drawn up for access. It works good for the town without saddling the town with a lot of new roadway. Uh, and it works well for the environment, much less paved surface, much less drainage to have to deal with. All dwellings must comply with applicable Board of Health requirements. You have to have a, you have to have a lot big enough for a well, you know, if you're not in the, in the public water area, you have to have a lot big enough for an onsite septic system and a well. And again, that's going to be an acre for four bedrooms. Planning board can modify the applicable road construction requirements for new roads within an NHRPZ as provided in the subdivision regulations. Subdivision regulations allow you to waive certain, uh, road standards. And sometimes that's appropriate for these types of projects where they're intending to be, uh, smaller and more intimate, blend in with the landscape. You can cut down those gigantic roads, uh, and turn them into more reasonable, um, access roads in one of these projects. Arrangement of lots. And these are a whole bunch of standards about, about how lots get arranged in here. Protect views from roads and other publicly accessible points, neighboring residentially developed land, historic structures and features, farmland and wildlife habitat, large harvestable forest areas, hilltops, ponds, steep slopes, other sensitive environmental resources while facilitating pedestrian circulation. Generally, residential lots should be located the min, the minimum feasible distance from existing public roadways. This is something I highlighted because this may not be Stockbridge's policy. It, it was Schutze Berry's, um, and it is Leiden's, but, um, you may prefer developments that are located farther back and protect your roadside. So you can take a look at this and see if you, if you, uh, if you want to keep it or you want to change it. Planning board shall take into consideration the conservation analysis and findings and the approval and arrangement of lots. Okay, lot, roadway and shared driveway layouts, land alterations and placement of structures shall follow applicable portions of the rural sighting principles in Section 511. Comment, Schutze Berry has these in its zoning bylaw, general principles for integrating new development into rural setting. If you guys are interested in these rural sighting principles, I can, um, they, they do offer a lot of guidance as to how to locate new development in a rural area without looking out of place. I can, I can show you those, screen share those quickly next week if you'd like.
Can you send that copy out, Jeff?
Okay.
And if possible, sooner rather than later, so, uh, those of us who sort of want to plan their schedules can um, look at it earlier.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, um, permitted open space shall be permanently preserved from development, configured as, as separate parcels from any building lots. Planning boards may not require such open space land to be accessible to the public unless a density bonus is allowed above. Any development permitted in conjunction with the setting aside of open space land shall not compromise the conservation value of such land based upon the conservation findings of the planning board. Individual or shared water wells may be located upon the open land, if so allowed, in the conservation findings of the planning board. Permanent preservation of the open space land. In a nutshell, it's protected by a conservation restriction, which is the most ironclad protection in, in Massachusetts. It's in, um, general law, Chapter 184, Sections 31 to 33. Only way you can get that overturned is a three-quarters vote by the town of Stockbridge and then a three-quarters vote by the entire Massachusetts Legislature. Okay. These are just other alternative ways of, of preserving the land. Not, not every, not everybody can get a conservation restriction and not everyone can find a holder for the conservation restriction. Often the conservation commissions in town, towns are asked to be holders of the restrictions, but that brings on monitoring responsibilities. Sometimes they may not want to do that. Then you have to go out and find a land trust or a state agency that'll hold the conservation restriction. And if you, if you really want the project to go through and you can't find a holder for the CR, you may want to look at other means of, of protecting the, um, the open space. Such means may include recorded easements under earlier sections of 184. Um, these are known as conservation easements, not conservation restrictions. They're, they're not quite as good of a tool. Uh, recorded zoning or subdivision conditions. Those are good as long as a zoning or planning board doesn't, um, uh, rescind them later, at a later point, which is always a danger. Or ownership by a conservation organization described above.
Have Jeff a land trust in Stockbridge. What I don't know is if they, you know, what their policies are with respect to accepting, um, conservation easements.
They hold, they hold, uh, conservation restrictions. They, you know, they accept them.
Yeah.
Also BNRC accepts them and, um, those trustees of reservation does as well, trustees of reservations.
Yeah. So what, what may happen, and I've seen it, is that the land trust may, may want the developer to set up some kind of, of revolving account for, for monitoring. Or, um, or attach that to the, um, to the homes that, um, that, that are built. Uh, some way that, um, the land trust can be compensated for its annual monitoring and, and assessments and any kind of enforcement actions that it may take. So there, there's likely to be a money issue there.
They also, um, I had talked to Narayan Shoder, who's, um, works for the BNRC a few years ago, and he had said there has to be a public option for them to hold a, a conservation restriction.
And that can sometimes lead to problems because homeowners, in some instances, don't want the public option. So this can get to be a challenge and has to be something that we're aware of as we move forward with a developer to make sure they understand the need to find an entity to hold the restriction before they get to the final process.
Okay, so, so yeah, th- that has proven to be a little bit of, of a bugaboo because, you know, in, in the beginning, it just wasn't evident that, um, you know, holding and monitoring and being responsible for these restrictions is work. It takes staff time. And if there's a violation or something, it could take a lot of time. So the holder, even if it's the local Concom or the local land trust, probably needs to have some seed money put into a, put into an account that will, uh, compensate them into the future for, uh, for monitoring this restriction. Ownership of the open space land. So, um, Leiden, I think, has a, a wide variety of, of ownership options. The fee interest in the protected open space land at the applicant's discretion may be held in private ownership, common ownership by a homeowners association, by the town or state governments with their consent, by a nonprofit conservation organization, or in such other form of ownership as the planning board deems appropriate to manage the open space land and protect its conservation value. So I know in Leiden it was very important that in private ownership be put first. That's kind of how they, they envisioned it, that, um, you know, large property would be partially developed in, in this way. And then the original owner could continue farming it or have it as an orchard or woodlot. Or could sell to a young farmer. And that portion that's conserved could continue in, in those types of uses. So that was their preferred option, private ownership. And, and as it's written here, the applicant, um, can decide on what form of ownership the open space is, is going to be left in. And I, I think that that is, you pretty much have to write it that way because I don't believe the planning board can say, well, this portion of your land you have to transfer over to so-and-so. I don't think that's legal, so. Now here's a, a really boring section. If the land is owned in common by a homeowners association, such HOA shall be established in accordance with the following. And this just runs down what's involved in a homeowners association. You may have something like this somewhere, somewhere else in your zoning or subdivision regulation. But this reiterates what, how that homeowners association has to be put together, what their responsibilities are. Their financial responsibilities to maintain the open space and all of that. And in, in the end, before this is approved, town council shall find that the HOA documents presented satisfy the conditions above. And such other conditions the planning board shall deem necessary. So your town council basically says this homeowners association is set up to successfully manage uh, and be responsible for that open space. And then
And what happens, let's say you've got 20 homeowners and a significant number, seven or eight of them decide they don't like what's going on and they stop paying their, um, required charges for utilities, road maintenance and all the things that are listed here. What, I mean, is there a HOA law that, uh, gives the town, um, the right to do something?
Well, um, this, this, item four, property owners must pay their pro-rata share of the cost in B above and above. And the assessment levy by the HOA must be able to become a lien on the individual property in the event of non-payment. So if, if you stop paying, you start developing a lien, an increasing lien on the value of your property.
Yeah, which is only relevant if you're going to sell it.
Yep, yep, yep. All right, hold on. Okay, this one may deal with it too. The applicant shall make a conditional offer of dedication to the town, binding upon the homeowners association for all the open space to be conveyed to the HO, HOA. Such offer may be, except may be accepted by the town at the discretion of the select board upon the failure of the HOA to take title to the open space from the applicant or other current owner, upon dissolution of the association at any future time or upon failure of the HOA to fulfill its maintenance obligations hereunder or to pay its real property taxes. So.
Yeah, I guess that's the best we can do. Wayne, you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just looking at, with 10 minutes left. Jeff, I wanted to get back to my question. I don't know if you made a note to, to get back to me on the density allowed under our current regulations up there at 37? Or if you were going to explain that today? And also, I would, if you could, send us that worksheet that, that looked like a good working, uh, document to understand what it is you're proposing.
Okay, um, I'll, I'll send the worksheet. I, I have a note here to, to do a conventional build-out analysis.
Okay.
37, and I'll have that to you at the next meeting.
Okay.
The reason you didn't get Jeff's worksheet today was I was afraid to send it out without his explanation because if you just saw the number of lots and you didn't understand the reasoning, it could be a problem. So we talked and determined that you would get it after the meeting now that you understand.
Okay, because it, because it looks, looks like it cuts density by more than half, if I'm doing the math right. And I, I would be interested in hearing from the others what specifically we feel we are in danger of with our current bylaw and why we think we need to restrict it by that much.
So I think it, there's, would be nice to allow people in the audience to ask questions.
Yeah, I was going to do that, Kate.
Left.
Jeff, um, that, a- and Wayne, that may be a question that we should take up next week. I, I think that's, that could get us, I mean, it's, it's a meaty question and one deserves appropriate time to, um, to discuss because it's
That's fine.
But I, I agree, it's getting on to six o'clock and we do have some public, uh, we almost got to the end. Uh, and thank you, Jeff, for, for, uh, pretty much racing through this. I think it was really, really time well spent. But if there are any participants from outside the planning board who have questions or comments about this process or what we did today, feel free to raise your hand and we'll, we'll listen to you. I'm looking. I'm still looking. I don't see anybody's hand raised either.
Anita wants to know the name of SF92 that's in chat.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
I think, oh, maybe, I don't know if it went to everyone or not, but there's a message from Anita and she's asking, there's someone on the call on the Zoom that is identified as SF92. And she wanted to know who that was.
Would you care to review yourself SF92? You're muted. It will remain a mystery.
Well, it's public, isn't it? Isn't it a public meeting? Who knows who could be on here?
Yeah, I mean, not everybody is identified on Zoom by their real name. So I'm sure somebody is not, not, not going to say. Since there are no questions from the public, I'd like to thank you again, Jeff, for your good work here and for your patience in listening to all our questions and comments. I think we made a lot of progress today. We'll continue to make progress next week and subsequently. Because I, you know, I think, I think there is, we are moving ahead and that's great. If there are no other questions from the planning board. Oh, Marie, yes, you're, you're muted.
Do we have a time next week?
Well, we have a regular meeting on the second, a regular 6:30 meeting. We have not established a time for a meeting like this. I think several people have said, let's not do it back to back. That's more, you know, it's just more stressful, stressful than if we could spread it out. So. Yeah, we'll work with Jeff. Christine will work with Jeff to figure out a date and we'll share it and we'll see what works for the majority of the board.
How does next Thursday, the fourth, look?
I, I don't recommend having two planning board meetings in a week. I'd prefer to have it, have them every other week. Stagger these, have one meeting per week.
How pressed for time are we on this?
We're pressed for time and I think. So we'll probably, you know, we've got the momentum behind us. We're getting progress. And I think if we take time off and we've got a pretty full planning board agenda for next week. So probably Jeff won't be part of that.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think giving us a day in between is, it allows for some rest and recuperation. So if Thursday works for everybody or most people, let's do Thursday.
Well.
Check with Gary to see.
Is available.
You should check with Gary to see, he hasn't been at one of these meetings and as a courtesy, he's been on this board longer than anyone. And I think that you should check with him to see what his availability might be.
Okay, Jeff, what about you?
I'm, I'm seeing, I'm seeing a, a meeting. But I, I'm not positive when it is. Let me, let me just go and look.
I know I'm going to be out of town Thursday.
Okay.
On my Thursday, Wayne?
Let's see, I'm gone through Saturday, I'm gone through Saturday of that, of that week.
Next week.
Yeah.
So we got Monday and Wednesday.
Well, actually, I'm gone a week actually, but.
Okay, Jeff, why don't you work on your schedule? Let Christine know what dates work for you and then we'll come back to the full board with a proposal. Anita, I see you've raised your hand.
Yes, thank you, Bill. I was wondering why you're pressed for time at that select board meeting two weeks ago. You said you didn't think that this bylaw would be ready for the May meeting.
That was me being a pessimist. I think if we can get this done in time for the May meeting, we should do so. We should try our hardest to do so. And as Christine said, I think we've got some momentum building up and that's a good thing. You know, we got through virtually the whole bylaw today. You know, that doesn't mean we're, we're done by any means. There's still lots of questions, but as long as we're making progress like this, I wouldn't rule out, you know, getting this ready by, you know, the time it needs to be submitted for purposes of the annual town meeting. I mean, it doesn't give us a lot of time, which is why we should try to meet as, you know, without large gaps in between meetings.
You mean just this one bylaw or the historical development bylaw also? Or can we just get rid of the cottage era estate bylaw as has been recommended by many in the past?
Yeah, I'm talking about this bylaw. And, you know, every time we talk about this bylaw, we also talk about, should we have a related but separate cottage era estate bylaw or successor to the cottage era estate bylaw? I don't think we've resolved that.
So will there be public hearings? I mean, as to.
Yes.
This is, this is Jeff's bylaw, but these numbers and percentages like the 15 or 20% slope have they, don't they need to be decided by the board or are we just going with shoots berry or light and?
Oh, no, no, they need to be decided by the planning board and ultimately by the town. I mean, this bylaw, even if the planning board approves it, it's the town that says yay or nay, and it has to pass by a super majority. And then the state has to say okay. And in between us and the town meeting, there's the select board. So, yeah, there, this is not, we're not just mimicking shoots berry here. We've got to do this for the peculiar and special situation of Stockbridge.
So you think this will be ready by the end of April, I think, which is the deadline for warrant articles?
I, I'd like to still aim for that. And if along the way we feel we can't make it, we'll, we'll recognize that and wait for a later meeting. But I think if we can get it for May, we should get it for May.
Because this is such a major bylaw that would have an impact on the whole town. And at this point, it doesn't seem like a lot of people are engaged in what's going on here with COVID and, you know, spend most of the day trying to get an appointment for vaccination.
I hear it, I don't mean to minimize the challenge that's in front of us. And I appreciate this is not a completely straightforward bylaw that, you know, can be rolled out for the town and everybody will raise their hand and say yes, and off we go. We've, we've still got educating and, and informing to do.
And building trust as well.
Thank you.
No more questions, I'm gonna. Yes, Jeff, we're already past the six o'clock drop dead date.
Motion that we adjourn.
Jeff, what do you have?
I, I just want to say that for next time, and I can do it Thursday earlier. I have a seven o'clock meeting on Thursday next. But I could do it earlier. But I'm going to look at your subdivision regulations. I'm going to do a build out analysis conventionally on 37 Interlaken. I'm going to look into the inclusionary housing, money or land instead. I'm going to give you a graphic showing the 15 or 20% CDR business. I'm going to call Joel and I'm going to clarify with him what, what he was talking about. I'm going to send you the rural sighting principles and I'm going to send you the worksheet that we just.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I make a motion that we adjourn.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? I, thank you very much. Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, everybody. Thank you, public member, public citizens and Anita.